Okay. Time being 7:30, I'll call this meeting to order. On the agenda tonight, we just have one item, which is a special permit application for work in the Water Resource Protection District by the owners of Radar Properties and the engineering firm who will be doing the presentation tonight is Kelly Engineering. I'll introduce the board. On my far right is Tony Kinnahan, Jim Noys, Jerry Stetson, and I'm Hugh Hurley, the chair, and our recording secretary, Donna Carter. I'll ask, David, are you going to be making the presentation?
We're missing one member of the board.
Yes. But we're okay with four.
I got it. We got it.
So we'll take it from there. And if by any chance this gets extended, we can catch up with the fifth, but hopefully we can get through this.
Okay. Well, do you want anything else to read?
What I just asked, anybody that wants to speak, this is a public hearing, to first off introduce yourselves so that our recording secretary can get it right and wait to be recognized by the chair. And with that said, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board, anybody in the audience. My name is David Maple with Kelly Engineering Group. We prepared the application and site plans before the planning board this evening. When filing the application, we realized the planning board didn't have a big staff, so I had no idea if this would be available for us, so I printed some displays on some boards.
Okay.
So the project that is before you tonight, I'm just deciding where to best put this for everybody, is a redo of a project that's been here twice before. In 2007, the current landowner, Radar Properties, had a proposal for two buildings on the site. And at that time, there was going to be an office building up in the front that's there and a warehouse flex building out in the back that never got constructed in 2007. Right around that time, the office building, which I think has a medical tenant of some type in there, was built and has been going since. In 2017, the landowner came back to refresh the site plan slightly, changed it a little bit to try to hit the market a little better. I think at that time, they added a couple more loading docks and added a few more parking stalls. Since that time in 2017, they weren't able to lease the property, and I think that the seller or the landowner filed an A&R plan and put a lot up for sale. And so I'm here with Marcus Partners, or developers in the area, with Brandon Fritz, who have interest in the property. They are experts in the warehouse market, dry goods, and feel that they're a good fit for the property and think they can get something done. So anybody who doesn't know where this property is, I just put together a little map. We use the same ones for ComCom, but Route 24, Route 104, and the Manly Street right on the corner. Number five, Manly, is up front, so then there's about 27 acres in the back that went on the A&R plan this past January, and Marcus Partners are interested in buying it. So what they want to do, we took a look at the site and Bracken Engineering was a little too busy. We've been doing a lot of work with Marcus Partners in different places within the Commonwealth, and they asked us to take a look at it for them. So it's kind of very similar to both of the special permits that were granted before, except we have a little bit bigger rebuilding and a lot less parking. Everything has changed in the warehouse market. Marcus feels that they can probably do this with one or maybe two tenants. It seems to me that the previous site plans were set up as flex buildings, multi-tenant shapes that, you know, that it just didn't work for these guys. What these guys really needed was enough space for loading bays so we could get some tractor-trailers in there. So it's a very similar project to the two that have existing special permits before. The building's a little bit bigger, and we have less parking. So what, just to give us the breakdown on the square footages, I think 2017 was 75,000 square feet?
Seventy-three, eight-hundred.
Seventy-three, eight-hundred with 200 parking stalls and 18 loading positions. So we're here with 88,000 square feet with 115 parking stalls, however, 21 of those are land banks. We don't think we need them. We leave all green space over here, but if a tenant needs a little bit more parking, we have a little bit more space for 21 additional stalls. And along the back there, we have room for 16 loading bays, and in between those loading bays, there's enough room for a little trailer storage, so 14 trailer storage positions plus 16 loading docks. So what this plan really does is we have a little bit bigger building, we don't think we need the car parking, and we get better room. So we know that this project is, or the land has always been, within the watershed overlay protection district. Town wells are right here. We've been working hard with the Conservation Commission through our conservation issues and also a drainage peer review that's been, that has gone pretty well. We've gone one round, and we really haven't had to make many significant plan changes to the building or the parking. And we got our last review back last week, and we're down to a couple minor comments. So we filed a fairly thorough package. As you know, we have full landscape, architecture, lighting plans. A little bit different, you know, this time we think Marcus Partners are ready to go and building, you know, in the market, where they're trying to still hit the current market. So we would like to just refresh the special permit that exists on the land to reflect the current site plan. We have reviewed the conditions of the '07 special permit, which were all reincorporated into the 2017 special permit, and we don't have any, don't take any issues with any of those items. As far as zoning goes, I think the site and the development's completely compliant with the zoning bylaw. We haven't heard any, any public comments come to either of the company's hearings, or we haven't received any comments as well. There's some members in the audience here. So they want to build that building. I put some of the documents that are within the packages that you have, I have them here. I have a blown-up copy of our site plan. I have the whole site plan. I have a drainage markup, so depending on the wishes of the planning board, you know, we kind of see this one as an update of an existing special permit, and we'd like to move forward with that, and that's what we're here for.
Okay. So let me just make sure I got this right. You're showing in the parking and access what you believe you will need, so you're leaving a portion of it as a potential...
Land bank. Go plant the grass, and if a tenant needed it, it's included in the drainage calculations and the infurbius calculations.
Okay, good, because parking is always important, and you haven't squeezed it down to the last drop, so you do have...
Right. So in a building of this size, what these guys think they will probably need for a single-tenant or even multi-tenant dry good warehouse is maybe 30 employees or so.
Okay, which brings up the next thing. This is dry good, so it'll be, you don't have a tenant, sort of...
We don't.
But it'll be no manufacturing, you'll be no mixing, dividing up. Steph will come in and...
Well, we certainly can't do any of the prohibited uses within the watershed overlay protection district.
Well, that's why I'm asking, just to make sure that...
Yeah, the special permit requires that all new tenants come and be vetted by the building inspector for their operation. So, and that's for, I think, two-fold, one, to make sure that we're not doing anything we're supposed to be doing in there, and also keeps an eye on the exterior uses. That was also important, that we didn't have any, you know, exterior storage uses at the site for, you know, junk cars, things like that. I think those are specifically in there, and we're okay with that as well.
Okay. What sheet is your roadway, the driveway? And do you, are you proposing any...
It's going to be on sheet four of the plan.
Okay. Are you proposing any changes? You're just picking up at the existing building?
We are, but we are proposing a slight change to the driveway, which is on the seller's property. Because when we started really looking at it hard with the turning movements, we didn't feel that we could get a truck in there for a while.
That's where I was headed.
Because we have the WB67 now, so this is one of our layout plans. We just pick it up on two sheets. So we're moving the driveway over above four feet.
Okay. And you're increasing the fill-in curves at...
On the street.
On the street.
With, there's a notes to coordinate, DBW for all, any work in the right-of-way. We're throwing granite curving.
Could you put that up on the board, please?
Yeah. So we did this on two sheets, and last plan was, so this is the driveway here, it just picks up down this way. So we're moving it over. Once you get into the property, we have to build a chain.
And it will handle a 53-foot trailer if you can get in there?
Yes. So we felt that that was a, we'd hate to get as far along and all of a sudden not be able to properly get in there if it's going to be a warehouse that people are coming in and out of. When I was there for my site visit, there was a flatbed in there. I don't know why he was there, but I don't know what he was doing, but he got in and then he got out.
I was there...
Because there's no reason for him being in there. That school...
He was lost, maybe?
That training facility is there, they don't...
No, this was a full-blown...
I know, for this, no...
Yeah. I don't know what he was looking for, but I stopped the truck for him to back out because there was nowhere to turn around.
Yeah, because I was up there looking at it, and I just wasn't comfortable with that roadway, you know. I had no problem in a cab, but I could see a truck going all over the place.
Would we put the turning movements to come in here to use the existing driveway? It would have been an operation using the old road, so we figure we're just going to make it wider, make it wide enough that we can get in, and if there's, you know, good business in there, we don't want to sit around waiting and everything and causing congestion. So we did make it, I think, 30-foot wide driveway.
I have done, I have been associated with that company that's out front. I'm no longer with them. They can have a tendency to have a full park, a lot of cars.
They told...
Is your parking, for you, the tractor, you got two trucks, potentially two trucks, the trailers packing them, so one in and maybe one coming out.
Mm-hmm.
Is that going to be a problem?
Shouldn't be a problem, because we've increased the driveway on that side to 30 feet and all of their parking's out in front of the building.
Yes, but originally, on the last set of plans you brought in here, Radar was going to add some parking in the rear that would be to the back of their building, like a...
Back here?
Yes.
This is the building here. There's a small part of maybe a couple stalls back here.
Yeah, they were going to add like another 20 or so, so they didn't have parking in that roadway, because if you're going in and out, you get tractor-trailers, the guy's been on the road for three days. And, I mean, that place starts at 6:00 in the morning, running, if they're running an exam for their EMS programs, it starts at 6:37 in the morning, and they use every parking spot. And they park right up against the edge.
Well, there'll be a little bit more overflow parking for them back here. I don't think these guys, I mean, there's going to be easements within the property as well.
But you're talking, people aren't going to walk, what, 200, 300 feet? We were going to, they were going to expand to the rear of the building for about another 20 or so. On the old, on your plan that you submitted, the last set of plans you did...
I saw that.
And that was agreed upon because of the overflow of that.
Well, we don't...
What's the roadway now, 30 feet?
What's that?
What's the driveway now?
The driveway's 24.
Proposed.
It was 24 today, it's proposed at 30.
I would, if you can get more, if you could get another four feet, that's going to give you three lanes of traffic.
Well, unfortunately, we're...
Because if truck drivers don't want to fight, don't want to fight with having the cars, and I'm telling you, the nature of the animal that takes courses there sometimes is questionable.
I did run into the fellow who runs, or one of the fellow who runs it, and they have another building somewhere, too.
Yeah, she did tell me. Yeah, they're up on One United Drive.
He wants the motorcycles out of there on Saturday, because it's like they start on Friday.
Oh, they go in from the back and they go up the gas station at the top and get something to drink and eat, and then ride all through there.
So the, one of the managers came out the day I was doing some test holes, and he was very nice. He didn't seem like he had a big parking problem at the moment. Maybe they've changed their operations, but as far as we know, the tenant in the existing number five has not requested that the landlord build them more parking, therefore...
Well, I'm saying, if the problem exists, the landlord's going to have to do it. This is the time to fix it.
That's their property, so they could, could they expand up in there? Is that feasible to do?
That's where it was, was it 2017? Was the last plan here?
I think I have the plans.
That's what was agreed upon, was to just to put an additional parking to the rear of it to address the issue, because tractor, I'm just, you know, truck traffic doesn't have much mercy on a Toyota. But something I need to consider, or it's going to be, somebody's going to have a problem because you're basically that, this has been formate?
Yes.
The property's going to be formate off of the front building?
I think there has already been a formate plan signed, and we're working with that pipeline and using processes.
It's going to be an easement-type joint type of thing?
Yeah, correct. So here, we see these all in here. The buyer has an easement over the landlord's property to use this land and park on this So there is room for more parking if the tenant needs it?
I know that even when the, was it American Cancer was the original tenant?
Something like that, yeah.
Something like that, and that's one of the Cancer Association. They used to do the parking lot with just office people. But when you're talking 40 students plus office help, that's usually what happens when they run a thing, and it's like, and they'll do it three, four times a month. Usually it's on, could be any day during the week. That training facility is international. They do it, they've been doing online for almost 25 years, and they take and train people online on, you know, video, and they bring them in for two weeks to do, learn their skills and get justified in skills. And then they do, then they'll run them through the test the last of the two weeks, and they become nationally certified paramedics. But I'm just bringing it, I mean, it was discussed and agreed upon before when Radar wanted to do it, so...
I, you know, like I said, we haven't had any discussion with the existing tenant other than I met the fellow, and he said they have another building up the road.
I know.
So I don't know, maybe that solved their...
Well, they had to, this, so this, this building, actually, they outgrew it.
Right. Okay.
Could be, it could end up, like I said, I've retired from that, so I have nothing to do with it anymore. But they, they could very easily move up. They're in, they're in the old shadows, up on United Drive, the big, the big...
Oh, plantation isn't still in there?
They're in the offices up front.
Yeah, but they were using the big building. Remember when they had the aisle of...
I don't know, Jiffy has listed on the sign, but I don't see much activity like they used to be there. There used to be bags and stuff across the street.
Oh, yeah.
Remember we walked through and they showed us all the different things?
Yeah, and they had the big machines.
At one point, it was calculated, it was 15 acres of building in that one building, when it was, Chadwick's completely owned that building and built it. But they're in, I know these people are in the offices out front now with training facilities.
Yeah. All I know is the fellow said that he was there, but we have another building right up the road.
Yeah.
Well, maybe this one's getting used less.
Just so it's on the record, and if it comes up down the road, you know.
If it comes up down the road, then...
But I know that some tractor-trailer drivers don't have a lot of patience.
Sure.
Never mind, they can only drive straight. But other than, other than that entrance to be in and out, I got no problem.
Okay.
Because conservation takes away a lot of fun.
Yeah, I know. And I spoke to the conservation agent, he said that there's a couple of minor things, but everything is going through, and he does not contemplate any problem.
Yeah, we're down to three, three comments in the period that wouldn't require change to anything that this board, you know, that would be...
Yeah, that's pretty much what he said, so we'll just say to be in compliance with ComCom and let it go like that, we don't need it. You did a...
We did a photometric plan, yeah.
That's what I'm getting, so, is there any spillover? It doesn't appear to be.
No.
How far are you at, is the building actually up to 24?
130 feet.
The pavement?
That's your aerial, the first 40.
130 feet.
So it would be hard for us to let you head straight out floodlights. They hit the highway.
But you're down in the hole, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're down, yeah.
So the lighting, I think, is 25-foot poles, LED?
Straight down, box type.
Yeah, similar on the building as well, those are straight down.
No, no spotlights?
No. We don't need those anymore now that we have all the LEDs that people have made.
Any signage, are you proposing to put any signage on?
We're going to try to get a sign, but I did, we showed one on the site plan, and it's a good point, that we would like to separate it from this building and get another one here.
Okay, there. But any signage out on the highway?
No.
No.
Just here. And we'll need to work with the building inspector and possibly see if we leave, because we kind of have two lots here in frontage, and we're supposed to have one sign per lot. They're going to work with the landlord and the building inspector, really, and they put up a new sign for the rear tenant, or the existing sign will get redone for a tenant in the back.
But basically, you can put it over on your lot?
We could.
Because that is a...
It's in the wetlands, though.
Yeah, then it is on your lot.
It's either in the right-of-way or the wetlands over there, that's the problem. So we've got some good hardships when we, you know, we need to go to ZBA, we'll try to do that, but...
You can show that you can do it, but you'd rather...
Right. And depending on the branding and what the activity in the real estate and what people want for signage, it could be somebody that doesn't need any signs. We don't quite know. We've shown the ability to add a freestanding sign up front, and we'd like to do that, but if we can't, we'll work within the existing agreements to work on the new sign that's already there. Either we do it or trim the tree or do something. We did do a zoning bylaw, we implied for variance if we think we need one, and we haven't heard from the building inspector, we're going to let it get a little further along. We have trimmed the lawn and the monuments.
How much filling are you going to be doing here?
Quite a bit. I think it is 30,000 ounce. Sheet 11. Earthworks numbers on sheet 11. You know what? You don't have the updated set, and we did this in between. The total site bills 44,000 ounces, including moving everything around. We're taking, we're taking stuff from one part and we're getting it out. We have the site contract to provide it.
Okay. The stuff that you move around on site, we're not too concerned about. What we do get concerned about is anything that is being brought in. We don't want, we don't want to see demo and reconstituted gravel and some of this other stuff. We want to see...
That made the condition, that was the condition, so... It made it a condition to be clean, charging dollars.
Right, yeah, because we...
Because you don't get much posted to a well on that site.
Right, we don't. Well, it should work out great for everybody. We can get a nice, you know, clean, clean dry good storage in there. We'll prevent, actually, we'll prevent the motorcycles from using it.
Maybe.
There won't be much, there won't be any access.
Unless you put Gatling guns on the corners.
They won't, we're cutting, doing a good job of cutting off the access.
Those are trail bikes, they can go anywhere.
They come across 106, they'll come from way down south to town.
Right. Taking their path of the tri. They're riding in where the building is, and they're riding out of the wetlands, so...
This isn't somebody on a big Harley going, "Chai, chai, chai." They may be in there, too, but these are the little field bikes that are jumping over things.
And these are generations of people riding in there. I mean, this has been written for decades.
Does it connect to much else?
Well, depends on how quick you are to outrun the cop when he tries to catch you on the end.
I grew up riding motorcycles, so I know up our way, there isn't much left either. You know, it's all...
I know that it has become some provisions in private land, you know. When Hugh was young, they were riding motorcycles. That was 100 years ago.
It was fun, though, wasn't it, Hugh?
These young whoopsacks, you got...
It was wooden, they had wooden tires.
Our old, what was it called? Our old gravel pit is an office park.
Oh, yeah. Where is the office?
Westford. I used to ride, I grew up riding in Westford, Massachusetts. Nardones.
Yeah, okay, your Braintree though?
Yes, our office in Braintree. I grew up riding motorcycles.
Oh, okay.
In Westford, Mass.
Oh, when I asked you where your office was...
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so...
Our office in Braintree. I said where we used to ride, though, is now an office park. Now it's getting flipped from an office park to residential park. Feels like a lot of empty office buildings.
Yeah, that's true. Everybody's working from home. Have you been to the board of health for the septic system yet?
We haven't, but we did do the perk tests.
Okay.
So we don't see any problems. We'll be under 2,000 ounces per day, lower employee count, nice, very good warehouse.
And it's all good material?
Under 2 minutes an inch.
Okay, because it was all good material, aren't the 30 feet that they took off the top of that is all good?
It didn't hold water for the perk test, so we'll probably have, ground water was a little, little lower than we thought it was going to be, actually, so we'll probably have six feet of separation, our septic design. We have more than, well, more than two feet for all of our drainage.
Donna, was there...
We did have the perk test inspected by the board.
Was there any response from any of the other boards?
No.
Nothing from upstairs?
I don't think so, but let me look and just to make sure.
Another look. We send these out to all the offices, and we get very little, little response from it. Did you have any communication with the water department?
Not yet.
Right, yeah, okay.
Other than we know it's across the street.
Yeah. But, because they, too, get these plans, I'm just...
Yeah, what we wind up usually happen is if we don't get much traction during the permitting process...
And then we bring them there.
Is it in here?
Yeah, and then a little one there, maybe. Anything would have been there, but I don't know that we got anything.
Okay. Hugh?
Yes, sir.
Dylan Craig in 387 South Elm Street. I'm a member of the Board of Water Commissioners. It hasn't made an agenda for us. I know that the selectmen did make recommendations.
Oh, they did?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, congratulations. I didn't realize, I hear the name, and I didn't realize that what you're, for now, congratulations are getting on. But the selectmen, did, because you...
I don't think they've sent, that's the first one, they haven't sent anything on...
It was mostly the typical stuff. It was lighting...
It was mostly the typical stuff, it was lighting, um, noise, a lot of the typical stuff they said for um. The water department being involved, it hasn't made it to the agenda yet.
We have a little police here next to the highway.
No. In fact, I hope you sound proof for the poor people working in there. There's those trucks and stuff going up the off, the off rounds here.
Make sure the trailers are down before they hit the highway.
Yeah.
We got another one today, didn't we?
Yeah, West Street.
Oh, yeah.
Whose was it? I don't know.
I don't know either.
What is it? Truck hit the bridge or something?
Yeah, and you forgot to put the trailer down.
Yeah.
So they just, I guess they had trouble backing it up too. Hey, I don't, I don't see that guy.
Took out a whole water, took a water main on the Walnut Street Bridge.
Yeah, that was years ago.
Who was that, that was Landers, was it?
No, J T White, Bill White was the name, like.
J F White?
J F White.
J F White?
Oh, yeah. He's, he hit a bump on the road and it, the button. The air button on the dash, and then they jiggle, and he didn't know it.
Till he hit it.
Came to a stop.
Oh, yeah.
I do have one comment question, or the way it's labeled, and I just want. Sheet eleven, which is the erosion control plan.
Mm-hmm.
It says vehicle maintenance and wash area. Not maintenance and washing. Well, what, what we do is we try to put together before there's contractor on board, the parts that we make up SWIP. So we usually rely, SWIP is a, is a construction period stormwater management program. And by the EPA, you have to have all those things on there. So sometimes, they don't have to do any, but you're supposed to have a spot for everything, and what we do, there's big notes on there, that once the contractors take over. It's a landowner permit and a contractor permit to make sure that you're not um, polluting waters in the United States, or having erosion pollute. Or construction debris to pollute waters in the United States, so.
Intended that notice during construction?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so this isn't, this isn't after it's constructed?
No, no, this is, this is, it's on the erosion control plan.
Okay.
So it's construction, construction related. I just wanted, well, vehicle maintenance, that's not gonna entail oil changes, hydraulic fluids, or anything like that. We shouldn't. It's just not a great note to have. I can understand where you're coming from.
Where, where did you point to it?
It's right there.
This is stuck on.
Uh, go down a little bit more.
Vehicle maintenance, okay, I see.
I know, you know it is, but you know, contractor gets it, says, oh, this is where I can. Yeah. Change out whatever I gotta change out. That's usually what they say when they see that, is, I'll never do any of that there, I'm not putting my loam here. I'm gonna put it over there. Yeah. We, we don't know exactly how exactly they're gonna manage all that stuff, but we try to give the tools to keep the landowners compliant with the EPA. Which, this plan comes along with a nice, another booklet of all the things that you shouldn't, shouldn't do when you're doing construction.
Stormwater.
Yeah.
Actually, give him another plan.
None of them. That one won't be used by the, by the builders at all though. Everything's on the plan. So we'd be more than happy to take a condition that says no vehicle maintenance, we don't own the property even during construction. We're not, we weren't looking to call out a, a place to do maintenance, but if they have a tire blowout or something.
Well, that's a little different than it's got a change of transmission on.
Right.
I mean, if blows a hose, that's, that's gonna happen, but.
Remember years ago, we built a new library and the contractor, his machine, the wheel was off it, the, the. It was all in pieces, it was a big fine load, it was in pieces for six months out there, occasionally they'd do something and, and so. So, yeah, so that it, you're happy with that as one of the conditions?
Yeah, yes, our intention is not to bring, you know, oil changes down here. It was merely to have the tools to move things around on what we call the road control plan or the plan that's coming into SWIP. That we can stay compliant with the EPA's rules.
Okay, let me, I have the two previous. Special permits, I'm just gonna get through the, the uh, conditions which.
All the conditions still exist, right? Two seven seventeen?
Yeah, so the, we went through it in two thousand seven, that's a recorded permit. I don't think the two thousand seventeen reissue, which was an amendment to the first permit, was recorded. I couldn't find it.
Well, I got it.
We have a copy, it's number three thirty-seven.
Yeah, I, I got it from the, the Tom Clark rather, and I didn't go to the registry.
Right.
Let me, let me just uh, read it and you'll have these on, so you don't have to take. Uh, when building inspector and perform annual inspections, it's a copy to use, which he's gonna do anyways. In fact, he's in the process of doing all the business inspections right, right now, so that, that's a, that's a given. The no uses prohibited on the section four, which is a given. That all fill is made of natural virgin material, so that's one that still, is still very important. Uh, that proposed tenants will need to petition the building inspector for zoning determination before occupying the site. That was for the, the front building, when, I, I don't think the use, who was going in there was, was specific. But it is still, it's, uh, he's, he's gotta approve, approve the, the going in there, so really, it, it's still pertinent.
Yeah, cause the front building has the potential of being too separate. It's used, it's wide, it's open, but it's like two separate, there's two entrances, they could be used.
Number five, that a twelve inch water main be installed as requested by the water department. Is the, the water main?
We think the, the water is into the property and we're gonna tap off of it.
And?
Within our property.
Was it a twelve?
I, we didn't dig it up and I didn't get a, a record card, it showed as an eight, I think, on the old plan.
Yeah.
So we show it as an eight, I, I don't know what, what ended around. We got, I got it upfield design.
But to put a, a twelve inch for a lateral just going in a one side, that is, that is, is big.
I don't know why they would want that, maybe they felt it would um, serve this new building better.
Yeah, but even.
For, for the truck wash.
Even, even, even so, we, I don't think we have any, anything bigger than twelve inch. In any of our distribution system, like whatever.
Yeah.
But, but that was a request for the old one, so.
Right, and we think, and we think the main was brought in the driveway, you can now, it's out in the back, it's ready.
You can see the water gate right in, when you're in the driveway, right in the street, you might see the water gate, so, something, something came in there. Uh, the building inspector reporting changing use of the property to the planning board. Okay, so those are all pretty much standard, now let's go to the. This is the. This is seventeen. One, and the conditions are that the building inspector perform annual inspections to ensure. Same as, the same, the no uses prohibited, same as, that all fill is made of virgin. Okay, uh, which is snow storage area?
We showed it, it's along the, um, along the back of the loading area, all back in here, and in our land, in our land bank parking over here. Over here on some of our green spaces, if we really need to pile it up.
Okay, but if, now if you, if you build those in the land bank area where you're gonna put that snow when it falls?
Probably just push it against the building, or bring it over to the loading area where there's more laydown area.
They, they don't, they wanna push the snow, they don't wanna pick it up and move it. You, you know, you push it, you push it out of the way, and um. Have you got any for this packing over here, have you got any, any areas in there for snow storage?
Just down along, along the edge here. This room, there's a big depression up in this area too.
Oh, this has a keeper, spill kit for sufficient size along emergency contact information.
That seems reasonable.
I think, I think that's probably already.
Probably already at most warehouses.
And, and a lighting plan, and you've already got the lighting plan, so that isn't needed, so those, those won't be uh, needed.
Twenty seventeen wasn't recorded. We just reissue new twenty twenty, or do they have to report both?
Well, what was the twenty seventeen, was it for this property or was it for the front?
It was for this property, it was a slight, kinda similar to what we're doing today, it was a slight redesign from the oh seven plan, which added more loading, a little more parking.
The other one had more office space, I believe, didn't it?
Something like that, yeah.
It's like the front part of it was two stories of office and then back, we had those.
And then in seventeen, it was slightly different shape, maybe setting up for multi-tenant.
Actually, this special permit is gonna supersede all the others.
Right.
Anyways.
Okay.
So if it isn't recorded, it's a, when, when the new one comes out.
So it's gonna include everything in the two thousand and seven?
We'll include all of those, other than, it was, it was a couple that weren't, a couple of things that weren't put in. And when I re-review it, I will, I will redline it for Donna if she forgot to include it.
Yeah, cause I mean, I was just looking at some, one of these things says that it was a mint, you know, they wanted to amend the, so it's not an amendment. We use that term mainly because the board has reviewed it, similar sized building in the same location. It's, you know, we would go build a seventy-seven.
Wanted seventy-three.
It's a different.
Site.
Proponent and the same, the different buildings, so it's, it's easy just to put a new, a new one in.
This should be a new one because radar is, is no longer involved with this one, because it's formulated property aware.
Correct.
The only thing that's in common is the driveway.
Yeah.
So, and, and a new one covers it all, but, but history wise, this, this covers it.
Yeah. We, we, you know, use that term, it's kinda like anything else, you know, are we reopening a public area or is it a new one? Yeah.
Well, if it was the same people and, and, and if the work had been started, if, if they had started it, then I could see making an amendment. But they, they haven't started, so, no, it's a new one.
But with the two thousand, we have to still keep the two thousand and seven? No.
That's for the front building, that, that covers.
But that front building was able to, for two thousand and seven, was it?
No.
No?
No, because Bracken was in. And Bracken was the engineer that, that, that did that.
But wouldn't that one have to still stay in existence?
Yeah, it is in.
So that one.
That covers that front part, probably.
Carries the front one, and this is gonna cover the back part.
Right.
So they, they wouldn't really, amendment is not an issue, because it's.
It's.
If it was still owned by, if it was still owned by radar, it could be technically better than an amendment. But now you have two separate orders, so.
Okay, is there any uh, further concerns from the public, yes, sir?
Uh, Dylan Craig in three eighty-seven South Elm Street. Like I said, it never made it to our agenda, so I have the speakers, just resident. My concern, in reason for being here, is like a release of PFAS, that well sites are highest, uh, well for PFAS. I was wondering, is there gonna be any signage to make any firefighters aware, I, I would never tell a firefighter how to do their job, but if PFAS foam was released on that site. I believe it would kill the well. Is there already?
I, I know, I was at, at something with the, the chief and uh. I, I, and the subject came up and he, he's adamant on not using it at all.
I don't think it's been used.
I didn't think it was.
I don't think it.
I don't think it's acknowledged.
So I think NFPA did away with the use of PFAS years ago.
This, so there, there was an instance where PFAS was used on Manly Street by a neighboring municipality, neighboring city. He wasn't aware that our wells were there. Okay, so or a tire fire, that would make me as.
Yeah, I don't think it's.
As somebody who's drinking the water feel.
I don't think it's a problem to.
If there was some signage or something.
Appropriate signage that we're in a well area.
That's fine.
You know.
Yeah, actually, yeah. Yeah, a sign, a signage, cause you do see that, yeah, okay.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll just work with the water department on appropriate, maybe two or three signs along the, you know, along the edge of the site.
I mean, you're gonna have to put the.
Yeah, we gotta put signs on.
You gotta put your conservation white posts up all around the wetlands and. Yes, you're definitely gonna be, have some edges.
Well, we'll remind everybody that we're in, we're in the aquifer.
Yeah.
I think that's just fine.
Okay, so we'll have a condition that signage is uh, alerting the public of the proximity of a well area. To be approved by the water commissioners, that way, whatever, if, there may be some standard language out there somewhere and. And whatever you, the water commissioners are happy with, yeah, we'll put it on, good. Cause I, I've seen the signs myself, I can't remember exactly what the.
I think it's appropriate.
Yeah, okay.
It's a, it's a blue sign.
Yeah.
Blue with white letters, it'll say water. Water supply district or something like that, you see.
Watershed area, or something, but whatever it is, and, and it'll be up to them to.
Yeah, it's fine.
To clarify.
We'll, we'll just coordinate the locations and, you know, what we want it to convey, who it's for, shouldn't be a problem.
Actually, that is a, that is a, a good one, you need, any, any place that's, that's near, near the wells in that area, is a, is a good signage. We'll number that for the next one.
Well, it's a good thing to be aware of it, because I'm sure that the insurance company is gonna be happy if something goes wrong. And you don't want things to go wrong.
So I had heard about the PFAS, but I didn't know where they were coming from, they were coming from fire, firefighting.
PFAS, Teflon firefighting foam.
PFAS has been coming, it's been around for over twenty years.
Yeah.
And it's, when everybody wanted to go fire protective, your kids' clothing.
Oh, it's got.
You know, all the fire retardants, the kids' clothes and all this stuff and stuff, it's just catching up now.
Got it.
But it's a man-made issue that I'm sure that some scientists could be smart enough to reverse the cycle. It's just, right now, it's like everything else, you know, we'll just spend money and, not a dri, just to bury the issue, we wanna try to fix it. Some of the foam they went to, over my thirty-eight years in the water department, we were better off with soap and water. Would put out more fires than some of these chemicals that came out. You just wanna smother.
Okay, that's it.
And the clothes too, I saw that on a, on a show, like when you go on a plane, just wearing regular cotton.
Cotton is the best thing in the world.
They said, cotton's fine. You won't, you won't catch on fires fast.
Or your polyester.
Yeah.
It won't melt.
I remember when, when nylon coats came out, and I was a, a pipe smoker, and with, with the windiest. I looked at my, my coat, and I had all these, these speckles, because those spots were coming out, and as soon as it hit the coat, poof! Okay, let's get back to business. Is there any, any further concerns or anything? Okay, uh. We have to go through the, the.
Findings.
The regulations and make some findings. Which is in section four point six point nine point three A. It'll be A, B, C, and D, I'll read all of them and then we'll make a motion to act on them all. A is consistent with the purpose and intention of section four point six, which is the water resource protection system. B is appropriate to the hydrology. B is appropriate to the hydrology, natural to part of these soils and other characteristics of site to be developed. Will not during construction or thereafter have any adverse environmental impact on the water resource protection district. And D will not adversely affect an existing or future public well. Comfortable with what we're seeing from those?
More 237.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion, a second. All those in favor?
Yes.
The vote is unanimous of the four present. And we also have to, under the conditions of approval for a special permit, we have to make the following findings. Under section 7.5.3.1. A, the specific site is appropriate location for such a use structure or condition. B, the use is developed and operate, not adversely affect the neighborhood. C, there'll be no nuisance or hazard to vehicles or pedestrians of volume greater than the capacity of streets affected. D, adequate appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use. And E, access to the site or the streets is appropriate for the type of vehicles involved. Comfortable with those conditions?
Both.
One more question?
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Unanimous of the four present. And... And also in section 7.5.3.2, the three following things, it's kind of redundant, but it's in different places, so we'll get through them. The use is appropriate to the hydrology, natural to part of these soils and other characteristics of the site to be developed. B, the useful not during construction or thereafter have any adverse environmental impact on any of the zones of the water protection district. And C, the useful not adversely affect the existing or designated future well, which is pretty much redundant with the other one we did, but...
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Unanimous of the four present. The conditions that we are going to be putting on, have you got them, is?
Well, I have a list of them that probably will pertain to it.
So it'll be, it'll be the ones that we talked about?
Right, for the site plan, right.
And then we're adding the signs?
Yeah. No vehicle maintenance.
I'll check them again.
Yeah, I...
I read them in the directory.
Do we have to do like we did with the one on United Drive, make vote this subject to satisfying conservation?
Actually, we can, that should be an additional condition.
Okay. Because now that they flipped with conservation handle of the drainage, now we don't have, we don't even look at it.
They have to comply with it anyways, but it just reiterates that it's in there. We also have to approve the site plan as presented.
So moved. Is that with this?
That's site plan approval.
Yeah, site plan approval.
That's under the site plan approval. We have to...
The other, the other thing with the conservation will be on the special permit, right?
Yes.
We won't grant, they won't get the special permit unless they get the blessings from conservation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The site plan approval is needed before building official, issue of building.
I didn't know what we were doing there.
And this special permit is one of the conditions of issuing it. But we have to approve the site plan.
Well, they just made it easy for us on site plan approval. Long as they got parking and lighting. The drainage is, that's not part of site planning, that's part of waste water management regulations.
And I like to see parking, so the fact that you've got some out there that can address it, because it's... Parking is a big problem, any place, if you don't have enough, it's a problem. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the site plan as presented.
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
The vote is unanimous of the four present. Oh, I didn't forget, Donna. We have an invoice here due for the advertising and stuff that we will...
The mail-in.
Pass it along, please.
You always save that for last.
And on occasion, I have been known to forget them.
The nine, you're not just taking, you give them.
One last, give us a credit card.
Okay, with that being said, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing and the time being...
So moved.
8:26. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion is unanimous of the four present. We'll put this together and...